Good evening, everyone. It's December 4th, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the Moscow City Council. Gina.
Welcome, all of you. Please join us. Stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no proclamations tonight, no whereases. So next up is the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as shown.
Second.
And seconded by Sandra.
I couldn't remember the word, as presented. Presented.
I still second.
Okay.
Any discussion on that? Okay, Julia.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
And Sandra.
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda goes. We're on to the regular agenda. Tonight, I'll have a passel of mayoral appointments for renewing commission members next time. I think we'll do them by issuing the 35 names rather than reading them out individually to council, and then we can just pass them as if they were consent agenda in whole. Next up, public comment and mayor's response period. And for the next 15 minutes in three-minute increments, we can hear from the public on any items of interest to you, things that are on your mind, as long as it's not before us tonight as part of the regular agenda, nor pending before planning and zoning or the Board of Adjustment. Just come up to the podium, names and...
Don't we have to vote on the appointments?
Oh, you're right. Thank you.
It was like, are we just totally putting those off?
Oh, I thought they were happening next time.
They're happening next time.
They're happening next.
We're gonna vote on them next time.
Because we've got this many, and rather than read them all, we're just gonna put them out. I'll let consent.
Okay, sorry, I just didn't understand.
So, so...
You have a couple of...
Next meeting. Okay, all right.
We have some people here that are being appointed.
All the better. Come back next time. If you want to speak otherwise, I think we'll probably just go ahead, because these are all reappointments. There's no newbies on this. So anyways, as we were saying...
So the full slate will, just to clarify...
Yes.
Full slate will come before us next week.
Accepting any new applications which may appear.
Ruby, okay.
Yeah.
So moving on to public comment then, okay.
Exactly.
Copy.
Yep. So, good enough. So, anybody want to join the mayhem in public comment for three minutes? Just pop up name, address, and go for it.
Hi, everyone. My name's Nick. I live over at the Elysians, 305 Palouse Court, a proud renter of Moscow, I always say. I'm gonna put back on my climate activist hat. The last time I spoke to you all was pre-pipeline bust, and we haven't had a meeting since. And we need to call out what we were saying a month ago before the pipeline bust was declare the crisis. We are in an emergency of an ecological and climate catastrophe that we're currently living through, and you all hold the power to declare it. This is something that the Biden administration is gonna be pressured to declare soon by many organizations, being launched tomorrow by the Sunrise Movement in particular, but this is something that we talked about at the rally that we had the Friday of the week of the pipeline burst. We had it planned for weeks prior, but then the pipeline burst, and then it was pretty apt to have a climate rally, and we sought public kind of comments on our current draft of a climate and ecological declaration for the city of Moscow. And we have one that's currently in the drafting stages where not just, kind of just, it sometimes feels like we're just shaking our fists, but seeing all the hundreds and hundreds of other cities throughout the U.S. also declare similar and like emergencies is really reaffirming in this effort. And I made a map, I'd be happy to show you all, of the cities and municipalities and indigenous groups that have declared similar crises, and it'd be the first in Idaho and probably the first within our broader region east of the Cascade Mountains, which is, I think, really saying something. This is something I really hope that you all put towards the forefront of your kind of imaginings. I was able to go to the Climate Action Planning Working Group, and I'm really amazed by their work that they do in that organization, but I think that you all could really push along a more liberating agenda to make sure that we put climate at the forefront of our happenings within the city.
I'd love a map.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I emailed you three of the commissioners about the draft, and I'd be happy to send along the map as well.
Please do.
Of course, it's limited by the current database that I'm working with, however, because Montana isn't highlighted, which is surprising because of the given lawsuit that happened that the youth filed, and it was successful. So I'm gonna be looking more into Montana specifically, but Idaho is something that I could not find anywhere.
And another approach would be to take it through the Sustainable Environment Commission as well and vet it through them.
Yeah, there's something that I, that's the commission that I've been putting kind of the center of this, is any development issues that you all have had presented to you in the past times that I've been able to make it to committee, they don't mention carbon and development, which is a massive problem. We're talking about concrete, which is one of the biggest emitters of CO2 within our city, so I think it needs to be at the forefront of development, and the Commission on Sustainable Environment would be a great forefront to kind of integrate, as well as a creation of one of the bylines we have in the resolution is to have a climate action workforce that is a subgroup of the, of the commission to kind of push these agendas. Great, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Who else would like to pop up and have a little word? Very good, and we move on to the next item, which is Citizen Commission Report from the Historic Preservation Commission, Mike Ray and Nels Reese.
Thank you, Your Honor, Counsel. So I'm with you tonight to introduce the esteemed Nels Reese over here. He's the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, Emeritus Professor from the U of I in Architecture. Served on the Historic Preservation Commission for the last 15 years, as well as Planning and Zoning Commission for the last 27 years. And if you really want to get him talking, you can discuss SH Archipedia, which is a project that him and a few colleagues from the U of I created a list of the 100 most significant buildings in the state of Idaho, which is fairly important, and it's published by the National Society of Architectural Historians. So, not gonna share that with you tonight, I don't believe, but gonna talk about what the commissions discussed over the last year. So with that, Nels.
Mayor Bettke and Counsel, hi. Seems like we just did this last week, right? Has it been? Let's see, do I make this, go forward with this little, little guy here? So, I, it's been a fairly calm year for historic preservation, actually, not, no crises, but I think I introduced our commission to you last year. The only change in our whole aspect is, oh, Gina, we changed, Sandy went Gina. So we have, as, as you can see, and as we talked about last year, our, we have old people and young people on the commission, which I think is good. You can understand why I'm interested in historic preservation, but our vice chair is sitting right over here. Laura Beth, you want to put up your hand? And I think she's the only other commission member that's here this evening, but she's on the young side, which is really important from my point of view, to have people who care about preservation and history even in their youth. And you've seen this before, so we won't work on it, but it reminds us that what we, at least one of the main things we do each year is to award citizens or institutions an orchid award that says they've done something significant for preservation purposes. And it gets more detailed, and we can think of, this year we aren't giving to a preservationist per se, but we have only five, we just had five this particular year, and we'll go through them. You can see the five right there, and we'll name them as we go down, as we go down the way. Each year, and I think I've said this before, but for a long, long time, many years, we used to give our awards at the ice cream social, and it was the end of the day, and ice cream was dripping all over the place, and we would be the last people at the end of a, of a tiring day. And we decided about five, six years ago to do something on our own, and this year was, the last couple of years have really amazed us with the kind of attention we get. We, this is our meeting on November the 2nd in the 1912 Center for the, giving the awards. And when you get 50, 60 people, you know, we can't get those kind of people at P&amp;Z ever, and you don't have 60.
You've never had a party. Try having a party.
Exactly. If you're gonna have cookies, people come. So anyway, it was a very lovely evening, and we're so pleased to be able to have a facility like the 1912 Center to, it just reminds me, it's probably one of the, besides my house, it's one of the facilities I've probably given more attention and money to than any other activity, and it's just a pleasure to be able to use it in a positive way. And there's Mayor Bettke and our own Cynthia King giving an award, and so that would be the process. And we try and get the mayor to come each year, and Art has been very, he's been very helpful in doing that. It's just so much fun to give people prizes that they deserve, you know? It's, it's a very special thing. So the first orchid award went to, involved Ridenbaugh Hall. Now, Ridenbaugh Hall, as you may know, this is a very early picture of it, but it's the oldest building on campus, built in 1902, and it was built just after the first administration building, and, and it was a, there was a worry that women shouldn't be living down the street in strange places, I take it, so they needed a dormitory for women, and this was it. So it's been a long time, but it hasn't been well taken care of, and I have to tell you that I spent eight years as Director of Facilities, and I was not yet, I died in the wool preservationist in those days, and I didn't take care of this building as well as I might have. So it happens, and you'll, what you see, oh, you know, I forgot to make a PDF out of this, this, you, you don't care about that, but the, the, I, I'm very big on typefaces, and if you don't do a PDF, you get just standard Helvetica da, so here we are. This is, shows you the, what the reception hall was like in the early days, and of course, it's just gone to rack and ruin. And this particular year, the, you'll see them in red, the notation we give for each one of the orchids. This was to the students in the University of Idaho College of Art and Architecture, led by Professor Ken Lawrence, in the Design Build Program. And they worked together as students with a professor to think of ways with a very little bit of money to build projects, so that young men and women in architecture get some hands-on work, you know, with hammers and whatever. And what they did here, this isn't a very, this doesn't seem like a very big project, but for many years, we painted the floor, the oak floor in this building was just painted gray. And so these students spent hundreds of hours sanding the first floor of the building, and you see that color of the floor on the picture on the right. There are many things that need to be done in this building, but this was a beginning of something, I think, something good. And here's some of the students that came to receive the award at the 1912, and it's such a delight to have young people getting to be rewarded for something that you wouldn't think young people are that particularly interested in. And so quite a group of them, eight or nine, showed up at the meeting the, back in November. And you can just see the floor, so I've tried to note the floor of the place, and our commission felt like it was at least a step forward to begin to look at the building the way it really was, and what are some of the beauty notes of the building. And you can see here on the picture on the left, before in 2007, in fact, I'm in the picture there on the bottom, the floor was painted this gray color, and now it's this beautiful oak floor. And so it's a step forward, and if you know somebody with a million dollars who would like to donate toward a good cause, this building could really stand some, some other attention. Anyway, this was a nice award to give. These are a couple of images that remind you of our disappearing agricultural industrial heritage, and particularly the picture on the right that I took in 92 reminded us of the skyline that Moscow once had, and some of you are old enough to remember that. It's easy to forget how we're, and, you know, you can't be angry at developers and owners to try and do something productive with their land. On the other hand, it sort of breaks your heart to see this incredible five- and six-story skyline drift away from us. And so the next orchid award was given to Andrew Crappichetz for the reuse of one of these, the iconic grain elevator, and it's the only one left, the only major grain elevator left at 625 South Jackson. And of course, we see a coffee shop there in the bottom of it, but these pictures just remind you of what the, you know, that, that building was kind of leaning up against the, and it got torn out. So what to do? How do you keep this remnant of our past, this 110-story skyscraper? How do we keep this? And we thought that Andrew needed to be thanked for stepping up to the bar and saying, yeah, we can, we'll keep this building. And then Maya and Danielle Clark are the mother and daughter team that are creating and operating the coffee shop called the Silos and Social as an adaptive reuse of one of these, in this grain elevator. And it's a pretty active place. It's just, we're having such a hard time getting Sixton Jackson to happen. Master Belnap, we, we count on him to make this happen, but he's not doing it rapidly. I, you know, sorry, Bill, but we're, we're waiting, and we're anxious, but meanwhile, it's nice to see people using part of the spa, nearby space in a positive way. You know, it makes people feel strange to see deserted buildings. And so we felt that this mother and daughter team really needed to be honored for working with Andrew to bring life to the corner of Sixton Jackson. And we're waiting for something to happen, and I'm sure that vigorous counsel can have some effect on it. The next one is a house built on the corner of Third and Hay Street. And this is Karen Antikoviac. She gets an award for building a new home at 309 South Hay Street that respects the historic character of the neighborhood. And we were all a little disappointed that the, the blue house there was really an old house, probably built maybe 1890s sometime, but it was built very poorly. And when it was, the Antikoviacs had bought the house thinking they were going to repair it, but it was not worth repairing. It just was, you know, no foundation at all, it was just sitting on dirt, and it was, so the question is, what do we put in its, in its place? And we also gave an award to the, to the designer, Luke Ryan, for designing this Karen Antikoviac's residence in a manner that respects the historic character of the neighborhood. This is not in the, not in a historic district, mind you, it's just across the street from the park, so it really isn't in a district, but this house goes above and beyond your average home, and I got to watch every, I got to watch it every day as it was, it was being built. So it was one of the great pleasures of my life to watch every little aspect of the house being built. And you can see that back a couple of years ago, the old house had to be torn down, and they were able, Mrs. Antikoviac found this, this newspaper in the wall that was from 1895, so we, we cried it tear or two about it, but we've, you know, there are those of my colleagues in the architectural world who are modernists, and I was trained as a modernist, to say, we don't need to build stuff that looks back, we need to look forward. On the other hand, I've taken a different stance, and I managed to be fairly notable as an anti-modernist, even though that's, that's the way I was trained. So this, the, our commission decided that we would like to honor this, and you can see a typical craftsman Sears house of the 30s and see the same kind of porches that this house had. And so we thought it was worth giving a nod to. You've heard about the, you know, idea of the University of Idaho Historic District, and we got started with it, and it's a little bit more complicated than, of course, it's gonna include a number of buildings, maybe 15, maybe 20, maybe 25 buildings on campus. And the question is how to approach this potential new district. And with good advice from our Mayor Bettke, I think we have decided that trying to do it from the ground up through the university is probably a more holistic way of approaching the project, rather than just getting 50 grand and hiring somebody and doing the thing whether people know about it or not. So you saw this drawing last year, but now, as we're moving forward, we were searching for a way, for somebody on the campus. And we talked, I talked about this project to many people, and almost everybody says, including your famous mayor, that's a good project, I, I support it. Do you want to do anything about it? No, don't want to do anything about it. Just want somebody else to do something about it. And so we found somebody on campus. The lady in the middle is Dulce Lark Kirsting, and she's a heavy hitter, and she has already shown us through the last six or seven years at the Historical Society of where her heart is in terms of our community. And she's now working at the library. The guy on the right is Ben Hunter, the librarian, chief librarian on campus. The lady on the left is a historic preservation expert from southern Idaho that we brought up, and so we've been touring the campus and selling ourselves, and Dulce is kind of taking the lead position with this project with great support from her boss. The, Ben has really a positive about it. So I think what's happened is that we've invited this young woman, Christina Olson, who's an architectural historian. She was here on campus in October, and we ran a class, and some 30 people showed up for the class to take training in how to do research on putting buildings on the National Register. Now, there are hundreds, maybe, maybe a thousand or more campuses across the country that have buildings on the National Register. There are only about 70 campuses that have actually historic districts that have taken that next step, because it isn't a magical thing, like if you're, if you're a historic district, you don't get a million dollars, you just get an attaboy. And so who's going to go do that? And so we invited Christina up, and we found out that you might think architecture students would be the first to be, sign up, but that's not true. You can't count on architects. Young architects want to build a brand-new building, and so many of the people who showed up were historians. The history department on campus is really into this, and think, wow, we could train people to know how to do this research on buildings, and it's a, it's a job. You can actually get a job and make a, a living doing this kind of work. So I'm, I'm happy to say that there's action going on on campus, they're having meetings, and as the year, the next couple of years, the dream is that in the next two or three years, we'll really be able to get, and of course, the city, we have the ability to get CLG grants, which the university cannot do. And so as the university moves forward with this, we will certainly encourage them to, and, and help with our CLG grants as we go along the way. And so thank you very much. That's kind of our year.
So, Nels, I learned something when I was giving out the Orchid Awards, is where the name came from, which I thought was a fascinating little bit of info, where if you were good, you got an orchid and...
There's onions that you can give. There are a few truculent preservationists who do give onions. We haven't been one of those. And, you know, sometimes in cities that have codes, preservation guidelines that you must follow if you're in that city, we don't have that. And so one of the reasons that we don't have, is the kind of problems I'd say that Boise does, is we don't have many millionaires or rich people in, here in our town to mess up our historic district so much, so...
So anyways, so this Historic Preservation Commission gives out orchids and no onions, or in the more popular vernacular, gives out more carrots and fewer sticks.
Yes, yes.
I thought that was an interesting little byline.
Yeah, it is. It, it's just delightful. And the state does this, cities all around Idaho do the same thing. I don't know how many commissions are as active as ours. Moscow is a particularly architectural city just because of 1890 and the railroad and the things that happened here, and because of the university. So without the university, you know, it's clearly the finest-looking university in the state. I mean, you don't have to, it's not a debate. It's, it's gorgeous, but...
Great.
Anyway, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I'd point out, for all the people out there who might be interested in participating in the city, not only is there the Historic Preservation Commission, but a slew of other ones, and there are vacancies out there, so please think about applying.
Yeah, we do, we have, as a... We do, we have, as of January 1st, we have a vacancy on historic preservation. So if somebody wants to see your mayor...
The form is online, too. On the commission page, there's a form.
Thank you.
So thank you, Nels.
Mr. Mayor, I've just got one...
Madam.
Comment slash question. I don't quite know which one it is just yet. And it may be something that Mike can help us with. We received a number of emails when the Keeney Brothers building was going through its, the demolition for its reconstruction. And I think there were some questions as to what power we hold, even if we have historic buildings and historic districts downtown on Main Street. And I, I think the attaboy is a good way to phrase it. And Nels is like, we, it's a really important recognition, but that does not mean that the city gets to have jurisdiction about what or does or doesn't happen to a building. And it sounds like it wasn't structurally sound for what they needed to do anyways. So that's part of why it came down. And I, I love that we have really mindful citizens who are very aware of, you know, we don't want a futuristic building going in into our historic downtown. But I just wanted to clarify for our avid audience and viewers at home. It's, it's a really beautiful thing that our staff spends a lot of time to do and help facilitate with, you've got private, this public-private partnership piece. But the, it doesn't always give us the tools to help make an unsound building sound just by putting historic placard on the side. So I was just going to add that because I think that's been top of mind over the past couple of months as that building's been under construction. So, thank you.
Okay, next up is the Leita Recovery Center's annual report. Daryl Kime, welcome, Daryl.
I want to thank you for this opportunity, ladies and gentlemen of the council and the city staff. I did not prepare a long presentation. I figured I would talk for maybe five minutes, and you guys would ask me a bunch of questions. So with that in mind, I'll just fire away. We've had an exciting year. Our, our year started off with a bang, not necessarily a good one. And then it's been building from there. That said, and I'll address that later on. But that said, we're still doing the same basic things we've been doing. And those services are, we offer recovery coaching. We have all kinds of referrals to other community resources that we provide. We're on, we're being right on Main Street. We're very central, so people come in with all kinds of recovery-related questions, and we're able to answer those. That's an important service we provide. We also have still 25 to 30 different life skills or anonymous group meetings or social things, you know, different group stuff every, every week. We're still, well, actually, we have expanded our vandal recovery program. We have a location now at the Campus Christian Center, or as it's commonly known now, the Center on Campus. So we have a actual outreach office there that's staffed pretty much full-time with recovery coaching and some small programs going there, trying to mimic what we're doing in the downtown facility for students. We also have a fairly new jail reentry program that we're doing in conjunction with Leita County Jail. We've got a case manager that goes up there and does case management for people that are about a month from getting out of jail. We also send recovery coaches up there to do the same thing. And in fact, we're trying to extend that over to Orophino with the State Mental Health Hospital, State Mental Hospital, for folks that are going on, I believe it's called a rider, from the jail over to the hospital, and then planning to come back to Leita County. So that's been growing pretty steadily for us. We're still hosting the Crisis Center. It's run by the Rural Crisis Center Network. And I'm going to get you some statistics on all this in a minute, but I'm just quickly burning through all, all that we're doing. Harm reduction, we still are doing harm reduction. I think I introduced this as brand-new last year when I was talking to you guys. We've got a very small safe syringe exchange. We do pass-out-free, safe sex, well, safer sex supply stuff. We've got Narcan that we also pass out. Those are available currently at both our, both our locations, our on-campus location and our downtown location. And then, as you guys know, we have a, have or had, or will have again, however you want to think about that, the men's Oxford House sober facility. And I'm pleased to announce publicly tonight for the first time that we've been given a $80,000 challenge contribution by a local donor towards a women's Oxford House facility. So we need to try and match that over the course of the next year and then find more, because you're not going to find a house in Moscow for 160,000 bucks. But we're beginning the process of fundraising for a women's facility in the next few years, too. And that's a very neat challenge we're getting from a local donor. So onward to the promised numbers. I like numbers. It's exciting to hear what we're doing, but it's no good if you don't know the numbers. Client contacts. So I always major thing in client, things in client contacts. And what that means is if I say we have, for instance, I'll give you a number right now. Last year, we had 9,122 client contacts. Now, that does not mean that 9,122 people came through our door dealing with addiction or a mental health issue. What that means is we had people come through our door 9,122 times. So I'll pick on Art, just because he's been through my door for meetings. Not that type, but as far as I know. He could come into our, into our facility three times in a day, and he'd be three client contacts. So that, we don't have a great way of figuring out how many people we served individually, but we do have a guesstimate that we served 337 individuals over the course of last year. And what that is, is I found that other recovery centers across the state were figuring somewhere between, I think it was 25 and 35 visits equaled one person. So I took the middle number. And it just seems like a way to qualify, quantify that. So 9,122 client contacts last year, which we're guesstimating to be 337 individuals, which averaged 760 client contacts a month. And our recovery coaching sessions have traditionally averaged 45 to 50 recovery coaching sessions a month. And by the way, recovery coaching is folks with an addiction. They've gotten certified that are helping folks that are newer in dealing with an addiction in a coaching relationship. Traditionally, like I say, 45 to 50 client contacts a month, but in the last year, it's been 69. And in fact, I can tell you, last month, it was closer to 85. And I was just looking at the statistics for this month, and I haven't got all the numbers in, but it was 85, and it's going to go higher. So we've seen an increase there, which I'm primarily thinking is due to the growth in the vandal recovery program from the University of Idaho. I also contacted the folks that run the Crisis Center, since I'm not the one that collates their data, but I figured you guys might want to know a little bit about them. And the Rural Crisis Center Network told me they had seen 311 people last year. And average age that they'd seen is 36. 50% were male, 39% were female, and 11% didn't answer. And I asked them if they were seeing any trends. And they are seeing a steady increase in homelessness. Now, I want to point out that they will be the first ones to say that homelessness is not a crisis. So our Crisis Center is not for homelessness. But if a homeless, if a homeless person is in crisis, they may choose to see them. I can answer questions about that to best of my ability when we get to questions, but not a homeless facility. So in preparation for this, I did ask my, some of my staff for some trends that they're seeing. The very first thing they said was they also are seeing more homeless people living in the street. In fact, I can tell you, for the first time since I've been running the Crisis Center, we have, we've been having some homeless folks that are hanging out there fairly regularly. And that's, that's okay with us, as long as they're participating in some of the programs that are there and volunteering a little bit, helping sweep the sidewalk, you know, something so that they're not just drinking our coffee and doing nothing. So we've been seeing that. And in fact, two weeks ago, for the first time, we had a guy that walked right out. He said, I'm going to find a place to sleep. And he thought he would just lay right in front of our front window, put out his bedroll at noon, and take a nap on Main Street. So I quickly saw that and said, well, Moscow is not the type of community where you're going to pull that officer, and told him he needed to move on. But that's what it's getting to be in Moscow, too. And we need to, you guys need to be aware of that. Other trends that they're seeing? Seeing people presenting with more mental health issues, co-occurring disorders primarily, if you're familiar with that term. That means that they've got a mental health issue and an addiction issue. But they're seeing more folks that are primarily coming in with, for mental health help. And our, our past has traditionally been more folks that are dealing with an addiction. So that is a bit of a change. Got to read my own writing, which on the record is horrible. So people seeking help to deal with their use of cannabis has really shot them through the roof in the last year, which really surprised me. And the comment I got when I pressed my, my staff on that, my, my coach, was that cannabis, as you guys all know, is not the marijuana of the 1980s or the 70s. And it's quite strong. And that's leading to stronger mental health issues with the cannabis that's available. So people are coming in more. Got a call just a couple of days ago from someone at the university wanting to help somebody who is primarily identifying as having a cannabis addiction, which you don't usually hear about cannabis addiction, but you're starting to. Seeing a decrease in IV drug use. However, my staff was quick to say that that's probably due to an increase in fentanyl use. The analogy I've probably used before, you guys before, but I'll use it again for folks that haven't seen it, is when it comes to fighting drugs, it's like pushing down on a balloon. So, you know, you push down on a balloon on one side, what happens? The other side pops right up, because the volume doesn't change, does it? So the same with drug use. If you have an emphasis on meth, and meth suddenly gets harder to, harder to find, it becomes more expensive, people are basically economic creatures. They're going to go for the cheapest drug possible. And that's whatever's most readily available, because basic economics is basic economics. And the last trend, the one of my coaches wanted to be clear that we are seeing more alcohol and cannabis than we've been seeing in the past also. One, one thing I had the, had the purpose to do in the last couple of days was to look at what we're seeing in our Recovery Center overall, just ever, not just recently. And the amount of folks that are coming in for addictions for metal, excuse me, addictions for opioids and drugs and alcohol. And it's about 55, 45 alcohol, other drugs. So it's fairly well-balanced. Those are the numbers I came prepared to report on, and now I love questions.
Do you have any resources for, you talk to people like putting on a mattress out in front of the place? Do you have a, do you have resources for people for homelessness? And what do you reach out to?
Typically, we would reach out for somebody like Sojourner's Alliance. But they're for long-term. They're not an overnight or, or single use. In this case, the guy looked at me and said, where do I go? And I said, well, you might try the park. There's not a resource that I can think of for somebody who just wants to take, to go to sleep.
And then the other question, could you use a quick update on what the status is of the Oxford House? And when we expect...
The one we're rebuilding?
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
And when we expect that done?
We are hoping to have it done in time to rent it out around June or July. Status report right now, I checked on it last week. They have dried it in, is the term that my contractor used, which means it has a roof. It's got the outer walls. The inner walls are, they're in stick form, so you can walk through and make out what the rooms will look like. Plumbing is in, or at least the basic first level of plumbing. And electrical's going in this week.
Will it be the same size? And it looks like there's some...
It's the same, well, it's, it's a little bigger. It, it, we were able to save the foundation. And we're going to have the same amount of living space, but we put the garage back in so to alleviate the, the neighbors had concern about parking. So we put the garage back in, and we extended the, extended a little bit of new foundation to, to make the two bed, the two, yeah, capacity for two in the garage, in the Philadelphia garage, before it burned down. We extended that to the west half, west side of the building.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was wondering if, in your harm reduction program, if you had fentanyl testing strips?
They are not legal in the state of Idaho. I tried.
Which was a recent development, right? Was that this last?
No, no, you're thinking of Narcan.
Yeah, it's not over the...
Which is legal, by the way. They just won't, won't allow us to get it for free.
To distribute for free.
To distribute. But fentanyl testing strips are considered paraphernalia in the state of Idaho. I ran that by the county, county attorney when I, when we started doing all this, because it made sense to me that if we were going to have syringes, the works you need, clean works and all this stuff and things, that we should have the little 20-cent strip so they could see whether drugs were as safe as it could be or not. But they're not legal.
Thank you. I was going to add to that, this could be a really neat oper, neat opportunity to have the Recovery Center partner with ASUI, because I know that's something that Tanner's been talking about on campus.
They've already been doing that. That's, they're on top of it, and they're getting the same runaround.
Yeah, we actually, I think it was two years ago when I first became aware of that, I reached out to Representative Kingsley, who is very pro-recovery stuff, and he ran a bill. But it didn't get any traction.
Yeah.
And there were legitimate reasons why it didn't. I want to be on the record saying that, too. I believe it was some sort of law enforcement groups that, that said that... Well, I don't know exactly what they said at this point, but I remember reading at the time. And two sides to everything. You know, I, I saw a good thing, and they said, well, it causes our guys some troubles, and here's where the troubles are. It's life.
I've got a couple of warfaits. Okay, Mr. Mayor. So for our unhoused folks who are coming through town, if we're seeing an increase in those inquiries, do we, are we just seeing Moscow be an easier place to get to for a whole, like a stopover place? Do we know where these unhoused folks are coming from?
I don't.
Okay.
You'd want to talk to Casey Bold on that.
Okay, yeah.
He's got definite opinions on that.
Ruby.
And, and we don't seek to be a, some, something for that more transient population. We're a recovery center for the entire community. There is a strong link, so of course, we, we see that, and we deal with it. But it's not our specialty.
Absolutely.
In a better term.
And I love that we have you on Main Street, so you are visible and accessible. But yeah, we got to make sure that you're able to, your resource, your limited resources are allocated where they can make the most difference. I was going to ask about things like, I said employment pipelines. Maybe that's not what I mean by that. But how, if you're seeing folks coming out of recovery or, or entering into recovery, do you have partners in the community that you can work with to help make sure that they've got opportunities? And, and is there much of a stigma for these folks who are seeking employment in town right now?
I don't know that I'm the right one to answer the stigma question. Yes, there is a stigma, but is it better or worse? I don't know.
Yeah.
But yeah, there are training programs that we partner with. The Hope Center, for instance, is one of them.
And then my only other question, or maybe more a hypothesis. I'm not surprised necessarily that you're seeing an increase in people reaching out for help for cannabis and alcohol addiction, but I do wonder if it's actually some of the work we've been doing as a society to reduce the stigma about asking for help with those things? And so that's, it's interesting to hear that spread. It worries me that if you're, if we're, who we're missing, there's always someone that you can still miss. But that's, that's promising. And, yeah, I guess my only other question was about the transient housing opportunities and what gaps we maybe are seeing in terms of community services. Because I kind of forgot that Sojourner's is, is here to help make sure people who are facing longer-term homelessness make sure they have a place to go. So thank you so much for...
We just don't have short-term homelessness covered. And especially with the loss of some of the lower-priced hotels in town.
Yeah, yep.
It's gotten even more difficult.
I was going to commend you for your appointment on the Moscow Chamber Board. It's really great to see that we'll have you...
Made sense to have nonprofits represent on the boards, since there's quite a few of them in town.
And so Art and I got this update at our last board meeting, but I figured I would love to hear about how Supes On went, because I tried to get tickets, and it was not successful. So if you want to share what the, what the fundraiser is...
I hate to hear that, but I loved it.
Oh, I love it, too. Yeah.
So Supes On made about $12,000.
Love that.
Which was a nice improvement. We had 200 tickets to sell. Next year, I think we'll, we think we can maybe bump that to 250.
Oh, yeah.
Because when you're, you guys have done fundraising before, you know, you know, for nonprofit fundraising, when you're selling tickets for 20 bucks each, you're not going to make $12,000 that way.
Right.
So we got that because businesses stepped up with sponsorships. But we do want to have as many people as possible getting able to come, too. So we're trying to bump it up a little bit. It was $12,000.
Yeah, it's incredible. I was glad it was a good...
I was ecstatic.
Yeah. That's lovely, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you for being open during the gas outage.
I had to have someplace to shower. We were pretty lucky there in that we had adequate heat.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir. Ladies.
See you next year, if not before.
Very true.
Yes. Okay, next up is the 2024 Arts Programming Update with our very own Megan Cherry, our Arts Director. Megan, what's up?
All right, good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of city staff. I'm here this evening to report on recent changes to arts programming. This is prompted by budget challenges that resulted in a 50% reduction in full-time arts staff. These unforeseen budget shifts have impacted multiple departments in the city. And while this has been a really difficult time, there has been plenty of support from the city team. I'm grateful for this support during this transition, and I'm, and I'm committed to this work. The following proposal for program adjustments aims to preserve staff capacity. And in saying that, I also wanted to note that... And in saying that, I also wanted to note that it's difficult to accurately quantify the amount of time saved by this proposal, and that's for a couple of reasons. One, we are supplementing our operations with support from graphic design contractors. Taylor Redner has really stepped up to help with some administrative tasks, so we're really grateful to her for that. And then importantly, our annual programming is developed simultaneously, so there are all of these overlapping timelines. And so with all of those factors, it's really difficult to say precisely how many hours are saved by this proposal. I just wanted to address that. But this was shared with the Moscow Arts Commission on November 14th. During that meeting, members noted a concern about a loss of literary and performing arts offerings, and I committed to sharing that comment with you. Members also offered to volunteer their own time to support operations, which is really generous, and I think that's very much in the spirit of the Arts Commission. One thing about that is we don't base core programming on volunteer efforts because it can create an unsustainable situation for programs. That said, Arts Commission members are valuable in their advisory capacity, and they do have the opportunity to advise on all of our programs. And then their outreach is always welcome in the form of event attendance or things like gallery tours. We have a commission members who will host gallery tours. And so I wanted to just walk through briefly, point by point, in the memo that is in your packet, to share some of the high points of the programs that we are maintaining, some that we are pausing, and then a couple that we are recommending for discontinuation. So the programs recommended for implementation as planned in FY '24 starts with Art Walk. So at this point, council is familiar with Art Walk. It's every third Thursday from October through June. This is an event that features all of the art forms that we can possibly get in there, including literary, visual, performing, and culinary arts. Registration for this event has been strong, and it continues to grow. We've just been breaking records with this event all, so far this season, and anticipate continuing to do so through this season into the June 2024 street fair. We are also keeping Mayor's Arts Awards. This is one of those, like we've just heard about the Orchid Awards, this is one of those events that encourages the good work of artists in the community and gives the mayor an opportunity to celebrate their work, which is wonderful, and we appreciate that. We are keeping the mural at Jackson NA. That's a project that we were not anticipating for FY '24, but when the mural that was previously at that site was damaged by vandalism, it became evident that that would be on our project scope for this year, and we will be keeping that one-time project for this next year. The Transit Center Sculpture Garden is a component of our portable public art collection. Of all of our temporary collection pieces, or sorry, it's a temporary collection program, and of all of our temporary collection programs, this is probably the lightest lift. Part of that is that we're doing this in partnership with the University of Idaho College of Art and Architecture. And it also is a paid opportunity for artists, so that makes it an important one for the artists of Moscow. And then Palouse Planaire, this is another event, like Art Walk, that has been growing and has just an incredible momentum. We're attracting artists and audiences from across Idaho and Washington for this one. And like I said, registration, exhibition attendance, artwork sales, they're all, you know, breaking records, and we want to keep that momentum going. And then finally, the Third Street Gallery and the Box Gallery, both of these galleries are here in City Hall. They perform a really important function in that, you know, they serve members of the public, they serve elected officials, they serve city staff, there's this business of, you know, running the city, and it's wonderful to have art be a part of that. And this also is a wonderful opportunity for participating artists, and we're serving hundreds of artists every year. So they are, you know, of many, many descriptions, very broad representation in this, in these galleries. So those are the programs that we're recommending for implementation in FY '24. The programs recommended for one-year pause include the Moscow Poet Laureate Program. This one's a little tricky to communicate, but we will continue to have a poet laureate in this fiscal year. The current poet laureate is Stacy Bo Miller. Her term goes through September 30th of 2024. What we ended up with was an instance in which the poet laureate submission period or call for applications and the Mayor's Arts Awards call for nominations ended up being on the same year. It's not always this way. This was a particularly bad year for that to happen. And so the adjustment for the poet laureate program is to pause the submission period for one year and also to reduce the term to two years from three. And what that's going to do is make it so that Mayor's Arts Awards and poet laureate are doing their submission periods in alternate years. So that's actually a really great sustainable change anyway. And so that shift is part of this recommendation. And then the vinyl wraps and storm drain murals, these are two very popular elements of the temporary collection. They're also really time consuming, particularly those vinyl wraps. Add to that that our vinyl wrap vendor has recently announced after finishing this year's installations that this was his last year doing the vinyl wrap installations for us. They're a bear to wrestle with, big sheets of vinyl in the wind. So we need to find a new vendor, and this pause will give us a little bit of space to do that. Okay. And then finally, the proposal is to discontinue city operation of a couple of related programs. First, Entertainment in the Park. This is a summer event that has been produced in partnership with the Moscow Public Library, held at East City Park, and it features children's entertainment and musical entertainment as a second act, often featuring the MAC band. This event was studied and adjusted in 2020 because it was scheduled in a way that overlapped with not only June Art Walk, but the really busy time for the market and arts and community event staff were pretty, you know, taxed in terms of staff capacity, but also the weather was a little tricky up there at the park in June. You know, there's a lot of rainy days up there at that time of year. And so also, we're looking at children's entertainer costs were rising and have continued to rise in those subsequent years. So in 2020, we reduced the performances from four or five to two and have continued with that schedule. And that addressed the, that addressed the limitation at the time. But then, you know, with these, with these adjustments that we've had to budget and staff, now we're not able to sustain that as a city-operated program at all. Related to that is the Moscow Arts Commission Band. The Moscow Arts Commission Band is a longstanding MAC program. It's 42 years old, and it has featured volunteer musicians in the community. They played between four and five concerts annually up until that point of the 2020 shift to Entertainment in the Park. Since then, they've played two concerts each year. And sort of coinciding with the budget challenges that came up for the city was a proposal that came in from the band where they laid out a really beautiful vision for an expanded service to the community, including more standalone concerts where they're performing at the park, including more marketing. And they've found some additional funding and some volunteer support for the band. And because they have this really strong passion and vision, we've asked them to transition into being an independent organization, taking that, that kind of vision into the, into the future. And so that's, those are the three sort of proposal categories, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
I have a comment. Is that?
Sure.
Megan, so I, I listened, I learned about all this during the Arts Commission meeting, too, and I just wanted to thank you for your strategic as well as kind development of a new program this summer. I know it's not easy to cut anything and that a lot, and that you care a lot about the arts and as most of us do. So I appreciate the work you put into this. I know it was a lot.
Thank you.
Sandra.
And really just to tag onto that, I am humbled and amazed that you are able to keep the arts at the forefront of what we do, given what you have, and it's amazing that people rally with you. And I'm grateful, as someone who loves the arts, to be able to see that happen. And so I want to thank you for putting this grueling thing together.
Thank you.
Here, here. Yeah, I appreciate the letter that Bill Boxman and Kenton had provided. I mean, it was very detailed. I, I was at Ron Davu in the park when someone on the commission approached, on the Arts Commission approached me and said, we'd love to get MAC band more events, more than just the two. And I signed it because I said, yeah, absolutely, let's do it. But I, I think it's worth clarifying, like Megan is a one, a Department of One, and I can't, I want to make a data-driven decision with this, and arts and the humanities aren't always really cleanly tied to data, but I, what I see is a list of things that you have clearly called out that do, we are, we are doing a lot, and by we, I mean Megan, with support from staff and the commission, are doing a lot of very visible things. And I get the concern of the gap we may be introducing with less of the performance arts and music, but right now in terms of bandwidth, I mean, this, this is clearly really well thought out. And also having been on the board for Ron Davu in the park, which started as a city event and was spun off 40 years ago into its own nonprofit, it's great to see this much interest and excitement from the MAC band, but I can't, I was just rereading our mission statement, I can't, I fully endorse and am in favor of what you're suggesting based on bandwidth, because if everything's important, nothing's important. And I love that we have active community members, but we have to figure out a way for everyone to carry the water so that it's not just Megan Team of One. So I know this was not a fun exercise to go through. Thank you for being so diligent with our people and with your time, because I need you to not get burnt out, because I want you here forever. So thank you. I'm sure it was hard, and we appreciate you, and I will hopefully catch some MAC band folks to talk about it. Because I'm also selfishly, I was a MAC choir kid all growing up, and I don't know what happened to MAC choir to go away, but these things come and go, and it hurts, and I, you know, it's not a forever. The budget hopefully will not always feel this delicate, so.
I, you know, again, as you kept going, you took all of the words I was going to say. I want to, I want to encourage you, I know it seems dark right now, but what you've just gone through can be bad, or it can be growing pains. And this change for the MAC band could really be awesome. And so, so take some comfort in the fact that you, you had to de-nest the little fledgling, but, but it could be a good thing. You're one woman, and you've got to, you've got to balance your life and this city life, too. So we get you, we're sorry, it's, it is not forever, and really, really, really thank you.
Thank you. Got myself some rose colored glasses for 2024, so just.
This is another example on how, what a great job we did in hiring you, because the bottom line is, you were phenomenal. So thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next up is the acknowledgement of election results by Bill Belknap.
I do not have a PowerPoint, just turned that off. Not for this one sentence.
When was the last time we didn't have a PowerPoint from Bill Belknap?
I was just trying to turn that off. So per Idaho code 5412, the city council is required to accept the canvassed election results from Leitak County, including the breakdown by precinct. So the Board of County Commissioners did meet, I believe, on November 14th to officially canvass the results of the election. So the results election, including by precinct in the city, are included in your packets, and it is SASS recommendation that you accept the canvassed election results from Leitak County this evening.
Your Honor, I move we accept the canvas election results from Leitak County.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? None. Maureen?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
That was a quick agenda item.
Quick and easy one. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yep. Next up, also with Bill Belknap, is the sanitation franchise fee amendment ordinance.
Excuse me.
Gets all worked up about sanitation.
I do, I do. This cold is still, still hanging on. As the council is aware, there was a recent Idaho Supreme Court decision that involved a suit against the city of Lewiston, and that, that decision has caused us to go through and view some of our historical financial practices specifically related to transfers from the city's utility, enterprise utility funds to the city's street fund. It has been a practice of many cities, including Lewiston and Moscow, that we transfer a certain portion of revenues from the utility funds to the street fund to help compensate for the impact utilities have upon the city's roadways. The utilities for both storm, primarily water sewer and now storm, are underground, underneath, run underneath our city streets, they're cut fairly often due to repairs and other improvement activities that diminishes the life of the overlying roadway. So the city has historically transferred small amounts of monies from those utilities to the, to the city's street fund. Additionally, the sanitation trucks that travel on our streets every day also have a fairly significant impact on diminishing the life of the roadways, and we also transferred funds from the sanitation fund to the street fund to mitigate that impact. The court ruling was that that was not an appropriate means of transferring to accommodate for that impact. And so when Lewiston lost that case, one of the actions they took to help replace some of that funding was to increase their franchise fee from the 5% to 10%. Franchise fees are fees you charge for an enterprise, a private enterprise to conduct its business within the public right of way, compensates the public for the use of the right of way. And so we are proposing this evening to increase that franchise fee by 5%, similar to what Lewiston did following the court decision. It really is essentially revenue neutral to the utility, it's just moving those transfers from one location to another, but in a legally permissible way. And so it will not have any direct impact on ratepayers of the sanitation program. We actually were able to, with some other adjustments we made this year, were able to defer the anticipated programmed sanitation rate increases that were going to happen effective October 1st this year. As you recall, the council deferred those in early October as well. That's what we'll be able to hold rats, hold, not rats. Maybe if we don't keep it with sanitation, we will hold rates consistent this year flat with the same fee that was charged in FY 2023. So staff has prepared an ordinance for the council's consideration that would affect this, and it is reviewed by, it was reviewed by the Administrative Committee on November 27th and recommended for approval. So I'd be happy to try and answer any questions the council might have.
Who has questions? Gina?
I just have a point of emphasis. Tell me how much this impacts the ratepayers?
No immediate impact.
Okay. Zero?
Zero.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Motion?
Go ahead, I got different glasses on.
Okay, Your Honor, I move we approve the ordinance under suspension, the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Okay.
Want to give you my glasses.
Moved and seconded, so Haley?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Okay. Now the internet decides to stall while I'm trying to get my ordinance pulled up.
Oh, you're gonna be mine. Look at the old school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next paper day.
Back to paper. Okay, ordinance number 202309. In ordinance of In ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho providing for the amendment of Title IX, Chapter IX, Section 9-3(c), providing for an amendment to the solid waste franchise fee and associated revisions, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. There we have it.
Great.
Julio. That runs us through the regular agenda, and we're on to reports. So let's see. Maureen?
So we had a URA meeting on November 16th, and that was, we heard from the applicants, or the developers, on that project that's moving along, there'll be another approach, they'll come back again in December and give further information on it, but it seems to be coming along and moving well. On November 16th, the SEL gave a tour, which I thought was pretty interesting. They're supposed to last 20 minutes, but since I knew nothing, I stalled it out and had to have 10,000 questions, just what... And they were great. It was a really good event, and Haley, thank you for including us all on that and making sure we're there. I was gone for Thanksgiving, so Sandra covered the SEC meeting for me. On December 2nd, I attended the volunteer firefighter dinner, and that was, again, another success to honor our volunteer firefighters. And what's really amazing is being able to see all the businesses that donated items, that people... It wasn't an auction, but it was a way of just a raffle, and people could win a variety of different things, and it was really nice to honor them. And they have a whole series of things that they honor people for, for five years, and retiring, and, you know, I think that they are unpaid soldiers, and we just have to acknowledge them pretty much, and the city does a great job of that. There we go. And Tuesday, we have farmers... Tomorrow, I'm at farmers market.
Okay. I had RSVP'd to attend the volunteer fire department dinner with some of my compadres up here, and did not feel well enough to infect the entire group.
Well, did you come?
Thank you.
And watched, you know, there was some football game on. I can't remember exactly what it was.
No idea.
But, yeah, so I made do. I tried to suffer through it.
But you know what? Actually, I should just add to that, that they did play the football game at some point during the dinner.
That's good. I attended the Moscow... I'm going to say it this way till I'm old. Moscow-Pulmon Regional Airport, ribbon cutting, the new terminal.
And you pronounce Moscow right. That's amazing. Good job.
Moscow, everybody kept saying that. But I have to tell you, it is beautiful standing in that entryway, wind blowing and snow and all kinds of stuff, but the gorgeous views. And you guys, we are so lucky here. And I'm hoping we'll continue to be the example of how to do it with two states, two cities, two sets of rules, two counties, just some craziness, two universities, just a great, great collaborative example. And a couple of the federal people that were there actually brought up the fact that we're kind of that little engine that could, and we're showing people how to do it. So anyway, I was proud of us. Tree committee, you saw last council meeting. I'm kind of pining away a little bit, but I did get to see Nick tonight, so I'm good. Historic preservation, right here with our friend Nels. That got canceled. There was a mix-up with scheduling or something, and I think they're going to bring it, we're going to do the December meeting. I'm looking at Nels, because you are the one that knows all this stuff. Planning and zoning, the last round of it, I had my friend Drew Davis cover for me, and it looks like maybe he got some... He's sick. He's very sick right now, and so I'm hoping he's well, but I'm sure that he had a good time, because P&amp;Z is a fun group of people. I have the extreme honor of getting to judge the parade on Thursday. I'm so excited about that. So I'm going to stand in the cold and the dark for lots of time this week, but I cannot wait for that. So other than that, I got nothing.
Julia?
Okay, well, let's see. We had Arts Commission, where we went over basically what Megan went over. And I had the Clearwater Economic Development Association meeting. They talked about all the good things they're doing, really an incredible organization. I filled in on the Human Rights Commission this month for Haley, and while she was in Paris, did you bring me anything? Because I filled in for you.
I have cookies.
Okay, I guess not. But anyway, filled in on Human Rights. They're having a transition in leadership, which will rock everybody's world, because they had a long time...
Ken Fons?
Chairman.
Chairman. I was trying to think of what you call the head of the commission. Ken Fons is stepping down and ran the fifth annual Turkey Trot with, meaning way behind, the Moscow High School Girls Cross Country Tour. Also, wanted to shout out to the greatest, if anybody can go, it's not a city event, Thursday before Thanksgiving, Bishop Place in Pullman, where I work, has this thing called Piapalooza. All the staff make pie. Not everybody. We had 20 pies, and you get a little, like a little cup, and you get a sample of every pie, and then you get to vote on your pie.
What won one?
She gives us this notice after it's done. Okay, well, thank you.
This year, what won was a Biscoff cookie pie. It was delicious. I came in third.
Airplane cookie pie.
Third out of 20, that's really good. What kind of pie did you make?
I made a chocolate-chocolate tart.
Fun. How did that lose? Right?
Exactly. It's the best event before Thanksgiving.
I love that.
Piapalooza, you have to warn us.
Piapalooza, next year, I'll send out a general information.
Good. Sandra?
Had URA, had the banquet. Great watching the football game on the big screen there, it was fun. Also, went to the ribbon cutting, and I was very disappointed that everyone on the Washington federal side kind of forgot about Idaho. Not shocked, but disappointed. And the few people that remembered was Moscow. So it was a little frustrating. I thought maybe we should get some money back for that, right?
Pity.
But it's all right. Cool hanger. I mean, it felt like a hanger, because it's not open yet, right? So I felt like I was at the Air Force Base again with all the big hangars, and it was nice. They did a really great job with that. Tony Bean, man, tireless. That's all I have to say. I had 1912 Development and getting ready to get bids out and find an architect for that third floor. I'm really excited about that. SEC was canceled. That was a good deed that got over rewarded, so I love that. Let's see what else happened. P-back happened on the 16th. The 16th was a big day. URA, P-back, Leittuck County Historical Society Board, all that, lots of stuff going on. Starting to make contact, P-back-wise, with some folks about water rights and treaties and water storage, so it's nice to see that that's rolling. Also, got to join Cody and Megan Downtown Judges for getting ready for the parade and the judging of downtown, and that was really fun. And it was a perfect, non-perfect night, because like, it was snowing, and it was kind of, it wasn't that bitter cold, but it was like the Christmas cold, with the snow coming down and all these really cool storefronts, and it felt very Christmasy, and I enjoyed it a lot. And it was good company out there also. So thanks for that. People now can vote, so they were... What happened was, we kind of went through a preliminary stuff. Top four had this really great voting system that Tyler put together. So now people can vote. There are going to be QR codes if you want to do that, and if that frightens you, it's okay. You can actually do voting. Is it at your office, Megan? Is that what we determined?
Yeah, it's the writing desk right across from my office.
So the writing desk right across from Megan's office here at City Hall. So go check out stuff and leave your vote.
Voting closes Wednesday.
Where do you check it out?
What?
You said you can check it out? The question is...
Downtown.
Oh, the four window finalists. But it does...
Oh, yeah. It should be online. It'll be on the city page, I believe.
Is it on the city? That's really the question. Was it on our webpage?
I think so. I saw it in the newsletter this morning, so I think I saw it go out in the arts newsletter.
Okay. So, and if not, keep checking, and it will pop up. So there's that. And just wanted to give a quick reminder coming up this week. Victorian Christmas at the McConnell Mansion this Saturday. The mansion was made to do a Victorian Christmas, so if you never go, go now, because it's when it's the prettiest. And there'll be treats, of course, but it's always a cool place to go to, but it's especially pretty at Christmas. And then also, Alternative Giving Market, December 12th, 4:00 to 8:00, at the Fairgrounds. So you can shop online now if you want to for many of our great nonprofits out there. So that's a big impact going on as well. And I think, like Daryl, I also have really bad handwriting. I think that covers it. If not, that covered enough of it.
You do.
Oh, goodness. For me, and it seems so long ago, because we had the holidays and everything intervening, but attended the First Generation Students event at the University of Idaho, which was very good by way of welcoming those from non-traditional, first-time college students in their family history to the university with the eye on retaining them all the way through. Met with Lieutenant Governor Scott Bedke, discussed some of the upcoming legislative issues with him. Then we had the natural gas outage, which was less than festive for all 36,000-meter owners concerned. And I've got to give kudos to Avista for turning off 36,000 meters and then turning them back on, going inside and lighting natural gas devices of varying stages of antiquity. And I'm sure some were a little more interesting than others, with the potential of taking your eyebrows right off when the thing ignites. Also, went off to the Veterans Day Dinner, put on every year, which was really an excellent event. It's always an excellent event, and so I'd encourage anybody to get tickets next time and go attend that. It's truly a great recognition for our veterans and military families. Also, on the 13th, we attended the U of I vigil put on by the ASUI, one-year anniversary of the murders on campus. Very sad, but very heartfelt ceremony that they put on, really good. Also went to the SEL tours down at their new plant, what are 140,000 square feet under one roof of robotic madness that does a fabulous job of recycling. Everything that goes into that plant pretty much stays in there. So when it comes to using water and putting water into the waste system, it just doesn't happen hardly at all, maybe 500 gallons a day, and I think most of that is probably toilets.
They use more for toilets than they do for anything else in the entire place, they said?
Yep. Went off and presented to Dr. Sidney Freeman Jr. at the Sheek Awards. They put it on from the Human Rights Commission, very good. Airport board meeting also occurred, and our numbers for load factors on our flights are doing very well. The Boise Flight's running about 72% full, and that's just fair-paying customers, doesn't count deadheading crew or people using award miles to fly for free. So 72% load factor there, about 80, 81% for the Seattle flights. So that's a busy airport. We could accommodate a lot more flights than are going on, but the shortage of planes and pilots persists, and as soon as that starts getting remedied, we'll start kicking up the number of flights on Alaska when the terminal opens, which is going to be a nice segue. But when the terminal opens, we'll have a place for more than one airline at a time, and should be seeing other participation from the United or Delta-affiliated airlines. At the ribbon cutting, as was mentioned, and part of that was to happen at the time when the terminal was substantially complete, and also to recognize the fact that Glenn Johnson, Pullman's mayor, worked on this thing for 20 years. And so we wanted to have the ribbon cutting while Glenn was still the mayor, and it was really important for the Board of Directors out there to do so. Beyond the ribbon cutting, there's liable to be another one come May, when the flights actually begin to happen. The airport was fortunate enough to score another $10 million in federal monies, so they decided, well, while we've got the construction guys here right next door, we're going to put on the West Wing now instead of waiting for the future, and then re-mobilizing the construction guys to come back and put in it. So we're going to complete the west side of the terminal, which is why the actual flights going into and out of the airport are pushed back a couple of months. And finally, we've got to light up the season this Thursday. Everybody come on down, watch the parade, enjoy, do a little shopping, maybe. I think Gina, Bill and I are going to go out and be all judgmental all over the floats and see which float takes the Light Up the Season Parade awards. That's what I have.
Wait, can I?
Yeah, ma'am.
I didn't do updates.
Okay.
Okay, is it really... They're fast, sorry. Pathways Commission, I just wanted to flag one thing that we had a really long conversation about pathways wanting to better understand. We went through our set goals. David Schop brought them, and one of the goals that they had set was to better liaise with Transportation Commission, and it brought up a really good, thorough conversation about, and I'll bring it when we do our 2024 goal-setting conversations and assignments, but it sounds like there's interest in trying to bring back like the commission soiree kind of event, where all the commission acquaintees get in a room together, the 1912 Center, to hear what each other are working on, and to better understand what their goals are, so that they know where to cross-collaborate across commission decisions and recommendations. So I just wanted to flag that, and there's a lot of interest from the Pathways Commission to reach out to ASUI as we approach the bigger conversations around the 95-underpass on Main Street. So that was really cool to hear. There were some students in attendance because of a class project, but it was great to have them there, because it was a natural thing to point to for us to improve on. I got to, with my work, SEL hat on, I got to invite our elected officials to tour the, for a private tour of our PCB factory. So that was really fun to get to email you all for my work email.
Well, you should add to the one thing I thought was really interesting, is during my tour, they said they do 25% of the manufacturing now, and by next year, they'll do 100% here.
Yes, yeah, and we just had an update on it, actually, last Friday at our Friday Lunch event. Yeah, we're ahead of schedule to be able to do everything in-house, which has been really cool to see. And had a smart transit meeting that was really good. We had a great conversation with Andy, the executive director. She's got some really cool ideas about fleet maintenance moving forward, not in terms of like how we're going to keep the vehicles up and running, but like what we can do to better serve, like what better vans we can, would qualify for care, money spending and things like that. So that's, it's been a really good conversation. And Alisa, actually, on the city staff team flagged for us that we have a very old transportation plan, and so that will be on my wish list to talk about what that looks like, to unpack and update for 2024. And I went and got pictures with pets for the Humane Society. I will share them with anyone who wants to see them when I get them. And was just going to plug the winter market the 1912 Center puts on, that is, the city owns the 1912 building, Heart of the Arts is a nonprofit that we contract with to manage it. Jenny does a fabulous job with that program. So this Saturday's your last chance in December to go get some really cool Christmas shopping done, holiday shopping, and hope to see you guys in the dome on Saturday. That's what I've got.
Anything?
Thanks, ma'am.
Bill?
Just a couple of quick updates. We do have the... Excuse me, it's cold, it's killing me. We do have the bimonthly City-County-University breakfast meeting on Wednesday of this week at 7:00 a.m. at the Walls Complex, so just a reminder there. And then the Fire Department will be hosting their awards event, as well as the push-in ceremony for Engine Number 20 on Wednesday night, 6:00 p.m. at Station 2. So if you're going to attend...
Which is that one.
Fairgrounds.
That one. Thanks. Got it.
I had to ask.
I think everybody else covered all the other ones.
Okay. Anybody want to go home?